I now call the East Lime Zoning Commission regular meeting of October 17th, 2024 to order at 7:30 PM. Could we please start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back, everybody. It's been a few weeks here. See, I'm here. Mr. Pack?
Yep.
Ms. Markovitz?
Here.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Kalal?
Here.
Ms. Jett Harris, welcome back.
Thank you.
Mr. Liska is not here tonight. Ms. Susko, I do not see. Ms. Yuhas, thank you for coming. We have our staff, Mr. Maholand, Ms. LaRocco, and also, we're lucky to also have Ms. Sutherland here tonight, who's actually worked a lot on the affordable housing numbers for us. Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
You're here. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so we're going to move right into our highly anticipated speaker, Attorney Bleesdale, to update us on where we stand on affordable housing.
Good evening, everyone. Tim Bleesdale. I'm from the law firm of Waller, Skuthen, Palmer, which is the town attorney's office. So as the chairman said, I'm here to talk to you about the possibility of an Affordable Housing Appeals Moratorium tonight, as well as a text amendment application that our office submitted recently, that I think will be on your agenda for a public hearing in November. And with the chairman's permission, I'd like to start with that, just because it's a briefer comment that I have on that.
That's fine. Thank you.
So I just wanted to let the commission know what you'll be hearing in November is it's an application that we put together to make certain changes to the zoning regulations to bring us into compliance with some of the zoning reforms that have happened in the last few years. Specifically, it's Public Act 23-142, which has a requirement that we treat certain types of childcare businesses that are centered inside someone's residence the same way that we treat single-family houses, basically. And so what that application will do is make all the, there's maybe 17, 19 changes throughout the regulations to get that into shape to conform with the statute. And you'll hear that in November. And one of the reasons why it's important that we try to take care of it this year is that on an annual basis, the Public Act requires the first selectman to certify to the state whether or not our regulations comply. And right now, there's no penalty in the statute if we're not in compliance. And so last year, what the affidavit that we submitted said is that we apply the statutes as written. So if they conflict with our regulations, we apply the statute. And we're going to work on changing the regulations this year. So that's the point of the application. And the concern that's out there is that the state is tracking compliance because we have to certify every year. And we don't know exactly what they're going to do with that data. And, you know, as we've seen in recent years, there's been a lot of zoning reform happening up in Hartford. And there's a concern that they're collecting this data now, and there may be a penalty coming down the road. So that you'll hear in November.
And if I made him essentially a housekeeping item for the commission and for us?
Exactly. It's just conforming to what the law is, anyway. Okay, so the much anticipated affordable housing question. So last year, the commission asked our office to work with the land use office here in Town Hall to determine whether the town might qualify for a moratorium on the appeals process that applies to affordable housing applications. So I'm sure much of the commission is probably aware of this, but there's a state statute, it's General Statute 8-30G, and it creates a special appeals process that applies to, only to affordable housing applications. So if you have an application that comes to the commission under that statute, and you deny it, and it gets appealed to the court, a whole different set of rules applies than would for a normal application that you deny. So typically, if you were to deny an application, when it goes on to appeal to the Superior Court, the burden is on the person appealing your decision to prove to the court that there was something wrong with your decision, that it misapplied the law, or something along those lines. But this statute shifts that burden to the commission to show that there was some kind of overriding public interest in health and safety, or something like that, that is so important that it override, overrode the need for affordable housing in town. And it's a difficult thing to prove. And the effect of that burden shifting on appeal essentially means that when you receive one of those 8-30G applications, they don't have to comply with your local zoning regulations. And so that is sort of the reason why towns are interested in this moratorium. But it's not actually a moratorium on affordable housing itself, which I'm sure you're all aware. It's just on that special appeals process that would apply. And once you get out from under that special appeals process, you're then free to apply your regulations the way you normally would. So, you know, you can insist that they strictly comply with, you know, the regulations as written. And so what we are looking at is there's essentially two different pathways to get a moratorium. The first way is to simply have 10% of your housing stock be classified as affordable under the statute. And we already knew a year ago that we didn't qualify for that, because in East Lime, it's about 6%. It's a little bit more than that, I think. But I think we've been sort of hovering around there for a while now. The second pathway is for the town to collect something called Housing Unit Equivalent Points, or HUE points. And to qualify under the point system, the town has to collect an equivalent number of points to 2% of the housing stock in town, as was determined by the last U.S. Census. So there's a little bit of math that we do. East Lime is split into two different census districts. Niantic is separate from the rest of the town. So we add those together, and we get a little over 11,000 housing units. And so the 2% mark for us is just under 222 points. So that's what we're looking for in terms of HUE points, to see if we qualify for a moratorium through the point system. The points themselves are calculated on a per-dwelling-unit basis. So say you have a development with 100 units in it, some portion of those are going to be market-rate units in an affordable housing development. These are called set-aside developments, where a certain number is set aside to be affordable units. So those market-rate dwelling units get a fraction of a point, it's a quarter point for each one of those. And then there's a range of points, all the way up to, I think, 2 and 1/2, that go on for dwelling units that are restricted by different income brackets. So the dwelling units that are restricted to folks earning 40% of the area median income, they get a little bit more points than ones that are restricted at 60%, and a little bit more than 80%, if that makes sense. So you get more points for those lower ones. There's also a distinction in the points that get awarded based on whether the occupant owns the unit or rents it. So there's a lot of math that goes into figuring out where our points come from. Traditionally, the town has tracked the 10% threshold question, but hasn't looked at the HUE points. And so we've been, what we've been doing for the past year is trying to gather the data that we would need to figure out if we have those HUE points. And so this pile of folders that I came in with is one section of all that data that the land use office has been collecting for the past year. There's been a number of people working on that. And what we expect to be able to claim to the state is that we have, and back up with this data, is that we have 265 and 1/2 points that we would claim on an application. So we would derive those points from Deerfield Village and Rocky Neck Village. And so 265 is more than we need for that, but it also is less than we can potentially prove with what we've gathered so far. And the reason we would kind of hold some of that back is there's been a change in the law that just went into effect this month. And what it says is that if you had existing dwelling units that you could have claimed points for when you applied for a moratorium, but you didn't include them in your application, then you can kind of hold those in reserve and use them to apply again in four years, assuming that you've been granted your moratorium by the state. So part of why it's taken so long to track all of this down is that there's a number of benchmarks you have to meet before you can actually count a unit towards your points, a dwelling unit towards your points. So first, you have to actually show that it exists, which seems like a strange thing to say, but when you dig into this, sometimes what you find is that some of these developments were approved for maybe 150 units, but they started building the units, they got to 110, they ran out of money, and they never built the rest. So we can't just say to the state, here's the zoning approval that says this development has 150 units in it. We have to actually show that they built them. So that's sort of piece one, is that they actually exist. The next part is that someone has to actually be able to live in the unit. So we have to show that they have a certificate of occupancy from the building department. And so that's sort of step one. The next step is you have to look at the development at the time that it was, they applied to this commission for approval. And you have to be able to show that historically, it met the definition of an affordable housing development at the time they applied. And that definition has changed somewhat over the past two decades or so. There's been, I think, four amendments where they tweaked it, whether it was the percentage of units that had to be set aside as affordable, or the length of the restriction for an affordable unit, all of those little changes. You have to make sure that you check all those boxes before we can count them. So a lot of that data goes towards showing that they exist, that they have COs, and that they actually did meet the definition when they applied. And so based on this, you know, if the town did want to apply, I think we can do that. The next steps in terms of what this commission would do would be to make a recommendation or a request, if you wanted to, to the first selectman to apply. Because state law puts the responsibility for applying and the decision of whether to apply with the first selectman. And basically, what the way the process would work is that we would put together a draft application, and the first selectman would publish notice in the Connecticut Law Journal and a few other places, and there would be a comment period for the public. And once we've received those comments, we can look at them. If we need to make changes to the draft, we do that. Then we would submit to the state, and submit with that any comments that we received, you know, proof that we had done the notice in the Law Journal, that we, you know, accepted public comments. And during that public comment period, I should also add that there is a possibility that citizens could petition for a public hearing on it at the town level. And if they did, the hearing could either be at the zoning commission or at the board of selectmen. It'd be up to the first selectman to decide which way that went. And then there's a sort of a repeat of that process at the state level. The state will look at your application to see if they agree that we can count all of the units that we're counting, and they agree with all of our math on calculating the points. And they would have their own public comment period, and people could request a public hearing there as well. But I think the, so sort of the bottom line takeaway for you, I think, is that if the commission wanted to, there are points here available to make that application, and you could submit that request to the first selectman.
Can you maybe just, in general, give us pros and cons of having a moratorium and not having one?
Yeah, I suppose the biggest benefit is simply that you take back more control. Right now, because you don't have a moratorium, if somebody comes in to apply under 8-30G, your regulations essentially go out the window, because you couldn't hang your hat on something in your regulations to deny the application, and then still survive on appeal for that denial. And so that's why people say that the regulations don't apply. It's really, it's a little bit more nuanced than that. It's really, you'd have to show that the regulation that you're hanging your hat on was really tied into some overriding public interest in health and safety that, you know, outweighs the need for affordable housing. So that's the benefit, the real benefit for you, is that you get out from under that procedure, you have a better defensible position if you get appealed, you know, if you deny an application or modify it in some way. You have a better legal position when you get to court. But also, you're taking back control. You can apply your regulations as you've written them, and you're going to have housing developments going in that are the sort of developments that look and are set up the way that you'd want to see them set up as you've written your regulations, if that makes sense.
Tim, point of clarification.
Yeah.
If we were successful with the state, and we granted that, somebody coming in under 8-30G would have to comply with the Section 34 Affordable Housing Rights in our quote book, I'm not sure if it's 34, 32. Is that correct?
Well, it's even more than that. It's any regulation that applies to the parcel of land, the zone they're in, the particular use they have, yeah, anything in your regulations would now, you could now enforce strictly.
So for example, if somebody applied to do residential and a light industrial zone, the board would have the ability to deny that based on the use is not a permitted use?
Yeah.
Among other things?
Yeah, that's correct. Because there is, yeah, well, so there is something called the, I think it's, I believe it's called the industrial zone exemption in the statute, where-
Yes.
Which was an issue with the Jag Capital Drive about 10 years ago.
That's correct.
So for those of you who don't know, about 10 years ago, there was an effort to put the, that was, where was that?
Rocky Neck Village.
Rocky Neck Village, that's right. Oh, that's right, yeah, okay. So Rocky Neck Village was originally called Jag Capital Drive. It was denied by the town because that parcel is situated in an industrial zone. And the statute says essentially that if you don't otherwise allow housing in that industrial zone, then you don't have to allow that 8-30G housing development to go in there, even though it's coming in under this sort of magic statute that says the regulations don't apply. What Bill is raising is that if we had had a moratorium back then, we could have strictly applied the regulations. So what happened is we went up on appeal, and it went to the appellate court, and the appellate court said, I think essentially it was because there was a-
Bridebrook.
Yeah, Bridebrook Nursing Home, right, was in that-
That's correct.
In that same zone, and there are folks who essentially live there. And so the court said that we do, in fact, allow residential uses in that industrial zone, so we have to allow that development. So now it's there, and it's Rocky Neck Village now. And we're, for that one, it's one of the ones we would count in our HUE points if we were to apply this time, and we'd get about 108 HUE points from that one. So you asked also about the downside. I think it's really a matter of perspective. You know, it makes it a little bit harder to build affordable housing. And, you know, by state metrics, they say that East Lime still needs quite a bit. We're at 6% instead of the 10% that the state has set as a metric. So that's part of why the statute, the special appeals process exists, is to make it easier to build affordable housing. So it's kind of a trade-off, you know. The regulations exist for a reason. You know, this commission has written them so that development in town will occur in a certain way and will look a certain way. But the sort of trade-off on that is that it makes it harder to build housing, when you have to come in and meet all these regulations. And so that's your trade-off there, is that it does make it a little bit harder to build housing. The other potential concern that you might have would be essentially optics. It's sort of a mouthful to say that you have an Affordable Housing Appeals Process Moratorium, and often, it just gets shortened to Affordable Housing Moratorium. And it sounds like East Lime has closed our doors to affordable housing. And that's not really the case, but a lot of people will see it that way, if that makes sense.
As a moratorium, how long does that last?
Four years. And then you can reapply after that. And so that's where there's that beneficial change in law that just came into effect. So what I have down here is enough units that we can prove to get 358 points, but we only need 222. And so the reason, so we can hold back some of these developments in reserve if we wanted to apply again in four years, by not including them in the application now, we still get to count them later. But, you know, the points that we would count for Deerfield Village and Rocky Neck Village, we wouldn't be able to count again next time. They're used up, if that makes sense.
But it's not entirely a free pass from the state for four years, is it? I mean, they have the, I mean, they can attach strings to these moratoriums. Okay, you've made your points, but you're still a long way from 10%. So we want to see you building 400 units of affordable housing. I mean, the back door here seems to be opening it up to subsidized housing, you know, entirely affordable or low-income housing in order to get to that 10-point. And if the state is inclined to make that a condition of the moratorium, which they certainly can do, then we've bitten ourselves hard on the behind. That seems to me to be the reason that very few towns have taken advantage of this.
Well, I don't know if I'd say very few have. It's a difficult thing to do, as demonstrated by all this data we've been collecting. Most towns, I think, track that 10% threshold.
Right.
And this is a much easier process to go through if you're also tracking the HUE points as developments are coming online. And we, the town just historically did not do that.
But the procedure of it, notwithstanding-
Yeah.
It's, I think there's a significant downside to this. I mean, the 8-30G regulations are a nuisance for us, because they put properties in play that probably shouldn't be built on. But the idea behind it was not bad. I mean, it's better to integrate people at different income levels into the same neighborhoods, rather than build an economically segregated ghetto right from the get-go. And I'm not sure we want to jump out of the pen and into the fire.
Those are all good points. And I think the important thing to remember is that people would still be able to build developments that would otherwise qualify as an 8-30G development. It just wouldn't get that special treatment in court, and they would have to meet all the regulations. So it may be more expensive to build those developments, but they would still be allowed to build them.
Yeah. I'm concerned that the state still has an overriding interest in seeing affordable housing built. And they're going to not just take, they're not just going to let you off the hook. They're going to attach conditions. And I'd hate to see us, well, I guess I made my point. I'm very leery of getting out of one situation that we sort of understand, even if we don't like it, and into one that might be worse.
They do sort of, let's see, I just-
Even if the moratorium is granted, towns are expected to show that they're continuing to work towards that 10% threshold of affordable housing. And the only way to do that, absent developers building, you know, 30% affordable units, which they won't do if they don't have to, is to build an entirely subsidized low-income housing.
Well, I guess I don't necessarily mean to-
You can disagree.
Yeah, I guess I do have to disagree based on-
I'm often wrong.
So when I'm not here as town attorney, I live over in Waterford, and I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission over there. And we have had developers, at least in Waterford, come in and, you know, not an 8-30G application, but voluntarily add affordable units. And I'm drawing the blank on the name of the development, but one example would be on Great Neck Road, if you know where that is. There's a Henny Penny there, there's a development going in across the street. The developer there voluntarily put in some mix of affordable units. I don't think it was enough to have met the definition of a set-aside development, like we've been talking about tonight, but it creates more affordable units in town that you could be counted towards HUE points or towards that 10% threshold. But it's on an entirely voluntary basis. There's another one where the old, the drive-in theater used to be in Waterford, they also have some voluntary units in there. And they were actually back in, before the Waterford Commission, a few months ago, changing the allocation of where, so they have several, they have two different developments going inside by side, and I think they're different business entities that own them, but they were reallocating the units between them, and they had to come back for a modification to our commission because, you know, it was a part of their initial application. But those are voluntary units as well. They weren't an 8-30G application.
So they can be taken, I mean, they can become market units at some point in the future, I would think.
Well, not without coming back for a modification. The commission could say no, because it was a part of their application. So there are ways that folks are starting to do that. And we're seeing it in Waterford. You know, you may start seeing it here, I don't know. But it's, I guess the bottom line is your doors aren't closed to affordable housing developments. It's just a different way to do it.
If I may, one of the complaints, concerns that I've gotten from developers and conversations in the office is they have difficulty finding qualified candidates to fill these affordable units. I hear that continuously. And that's, so there's kind of that, it's difficult to build affordable housing, from what I'm understanding from most of the developers, and being able to do it financially and put it together, given the development costs, et cetera, et cetera.
So Bill, what you're saying is that the developers are saying they're having a hard time filling the units with-
Filling the affordable units, because people have to qualify.
And there's-
For the, well, usually, it's more the condo style.
Right, right.
Rentals are a little bit-
Because if you qualify-
I stand corrected, yes.
If you're under the income max to qualify for the affordable, you can't qualify for a mortgage to buy the unit.
Right.
So it's a great catch 22.
Right, that's correct.
The other catch 22 is that our need, our income in this town is very high. So even when you have an affordable unit, it's still very expensive for some people coming in from out of town.
That's right.
And it's not, not at all affordable.
But a lot of times, people can pay cash for them with their retirement, even though their income isn't, their income qualifies, but they have enough retirement to pay cash. And that's how a lot of people-
They don't look at your assets.
They're buying them, yeah.
Which is, one would think the state would look at that, but they haven't.
Yeah, that's the unintended consequence. These affordable, what was originally supposed to be workforce housing units, are going to wealthy retirees to use them as their summer place.
We've seen that, too.
And they don't necessarily have to be purchased by the occupant. They can be rented as well. And in Waterford, what we hear a lot with these is that the folks that are renting them are, you know, people freshly graduated from college working at EB. That's sort of what they're looking at, and they're projecting as their tenants when they first get the development up and running. You know, obviously, we don't necessarily follow them after they get built to see if that's actually true, but, you know, that is the representation that developers have been making, you know, for the last few years, in Waterford at least. But you were right about the area median income. So what we're talking about for East Lime is about $107,000 a year. So, you know, the thresholds are generally 80, 60%, and 40%. There are some older developments in town where there are units that are reserved for people earning 25% of the area median income, but I think most of them tend to stick, these days, tend to stick to that, you know, 60 or 80% is what they're at.
So if we decide that we want to go the moratorium route, does that help solve the problem of developments going in places where they shouldn't be built?
I guess for the most part, yeah, because they'd have to follow the regulations. So where your regulations say a multifamily development could go in, or, and I guess that is one thing we should be careful about. You know, we're referring a lot to multifamily developments, but they're not all multifamily developments. So, you know, for instance, out in North Stonington, there's a group called Keeping North Stonington Affordable, and they've created sort of a new model where they go in and they are buying small, single-family houses, and fixing them up, and then putting a deed restriction on them, you know, for 40 years to make them into an affordable house. So there are some places like that. And I think there's some duplexes that have been proposed in Waterford as well. So it's not, it's not all, you know, big apartment buildings. But essentially, to answer your question, wherever your regulations say the type of housing they want to build can be built, is where they will be built.
So if we had an application come before us, and we came up with 19 reasons as to why that application should be denied?
You can deny it.
I'm sorry?
Then you can deny it.
Yeah, assuming that those were all proper reasons under your regulations and state law, then yes, you'd be able to deny.
I think that's been our concern, especially with some that we've had recently, that we have no control over, well, obviously, I'm speaking to the choir here, but, you know, like, I don't want to give examples, but worrying about pollution and septic systems and all of that, the affordable contingent kind of takes that out of our hands. And I think that's where the concern lies. And I think that's where the concern lies, is that we'd like to have a little more control over the environmental stuff especially.
But the environmental stuff is already exempt from the 830G regulations. I mean, we can turn, we can turn, turn a thing down if we can show in the record that there's substantial environmental damage.
Adverse impact.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's very, technically true. It's, it's...
I understand it's hard to...
Yeah, it's, it's hard to prove it once you get to court, though.
So another question, comment or question?
Yes.
So if I have a zone that multifamily is not allowed, and somebody applies for affordable housing, and we have this moratorium in place, and so our regulations say you can't have multifamily in that zone, are we essentially saying they only have to apply and comply with our affordable housing regulations in chapter 32? Or that it's just not allowed in that zone because it's considered multifamily?
Well, they have to apply with, or not apply, excuse me, comply with whatever the zone regulations are.
Right, for affordable housing. We do have affordable housing regulations in section 32, which were a result of one of our legal cases, and I forgot the attorney's name who wrote the majority of it. And the commission ended up adopting those, which is our section 32. So I could apply under 32 in a zone that doesn't allow multifamily, even if we have a moratorium.
Say it again?
So if we adopt a moratorium on Mahoney Field, and somebody comes in to apply for an 830G under our regulations in section 32, but they want to locate it in a zoning district that doesn't allow multifamily, that 830G still overrides that piece, is that correct?
No.
Well, I didn't think it did, though.
No, well, if we have the moratorium, you're asking?
Yes, if we have the moratorium, then it's not allowed in that zoning district, is that correct?
Right, right. If I understood, I think I understand that correctly, but yes, yes, I think so, right.
For example, RU40, single-family housing.
Yeah, right.
So I, as a developer, I come in under our 830G in section 32, and I apply for a parcel of land for 100 acres in an RU40 zoning district. But because we have that moratorium in place, it's not allowed in the zoning district because it's multifamily, therefore, it can't be built.
That's right, yeah. They would have to build the type of housing that's allowed in that zone, so, single-family, right?
Single-family homes. But then the question I have is, well, then could I turn around and apply for an 830G subdivision, where single-family homes are allowed, but I'd have to divide them into individual lots? I could also apply under our zoning regs, let me follow this thread a minute, under, we have special use regulations in a floating zone, an SU that allows multifamily. So if I'm a developer, I might come in under section 32 and perhaps apply for an SU zone on acreage, and I think I could do that. In other words, I have a floating zone that can land in a one-acre zoning district. By action of this commission, it's a zone change, and typically, we need a special permit if it was a straight multifamily development, provided it could be sustained with septic and water. But I want to add an 830G component. So if I already allow multifamily housing in this floating zone, I could apply for a floating zone, trying to piggyback the 830G, and I'm thinking out loud, but the 830G actually, even if the multifamily's allowed in the SU, I wouldn't apply under the 830G. I would try to condition it and sell them as affordable. In other words, I'm trying to get around our regulations.
It would be our decision. All, all of those things would have to be...
Well, they are your decision, but, in other words, if we got a floating zone that lands in the RU40, and in that zone, it's already allowed to have multifamily, subject to water, sewer, that kind of thing. But I have affordable housing regulations, 830G, in the code book. Can I apply as an 830G and ask this board to do a zone change for acreage in an RU40 zone, which I think I could, and then piggyback the 830G?
Well, you can't, if there's a moratorium, you can't be invoking 8-30G.
Okay, so that answers the question.
Yeah.
So I could still apply for multifamily under an SU, and the commission would, in its infinite wisdom, make a decision based on the evidence in the record as a normal application.
And it is possible, I've only seen this done once, well, I suppose that's not necessary, actually. I've seen it done several times, but you can apply to create, you know, a development that's going to have those restricted units in it without invoking 8-30G. So, so the examples that I gave in Waterford earlier, when they voluntarily did it, another example that I know is in the newspaper way back when it happened, was the Kohansie School that was sort of up the hill from where Toys R Us used to be in Waterford. That, they, there was an application, I think, five years ago, to redevelop that and put in duplexes essentially, that were going to have a certain amount set aside as affordable housing, but they expressly came in and told us, this is not an 8-30G application. You know, we do have that affordability component, but we're not invoking the statute. And it ended up being denied based on failure to comply with the regulations because they had not invoked 8-30G, and there was no appeal on that.
I'm just, I'm just curious, this is a little granular, but, well, down on Great Neck Road where they voluntarily put some, are those actually deed restricted or just restricted by the approval?
I believe it's both. I believe there are deed restrictions, but it's also, when they do it that way, just like the affordability plan becomes a part of your approval of an 8-30G application, it, it's all rolled up in the zoning approval. So, you know, so the way Bill and I handle, you know, a violation of one of those affordability plans is we treat it as a zoning violation, and we've never had to go this far. But in theory, we could treat it just like any other zoning violation in town. We'd use general statute 812 to seek an injunction in court and fines and things like that. We've never had to do that, but it is an option. And so whether, whether it's a formal 8-30G application or a voluntary one, when it's rolled into the zoning approval like that, you're enforcing the permit that they received, essentially.
Yeah, but just to follow up and comment on that, we have had a couple of cases where grandma lives in an affordable housing develop, unit passes away, leases to the granddaughter. The granddaughter inherits it, makes, goes into the clerk's office, modifies the deed, makes it a market rate, puts it on the market and sells it. We've had that happen. We look to the administrator of the plan to chase that down. So to date, we haven't had to chase it as a town and expend any funds because that's the job of the administrator. But keeping an eye on the administrator has proven to be an art form, and I thank Janet for her eyes because she's pretty good at that. And the clerk has been helpful in the clerk's office. When there's deed changes, they might notice us, and we'll start a process.
I got a call from the assessor one year on something like that, too. You know, there's, there's a lot of folks in Town Hall keeping their eyes open for things like that. And we do, and just like we would use 812 statute to, you know, enforce that affordability plan, we can use that to make the administrator take action. Because the statute's broad, we can use it for anybody who's actually occupying the property or is in some way connected with it, essentially.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah. I'd like to understand what Mr. Foley was saying regards to if we go on a moratorium, how this would encourage 100 percent subsidized housing. Trying to get my head around that. How would that...
My understanding, when I knew this was coming up over the past year, so I've been reading newspaper articles and minutes of meetings in other towns, and what I've discovered is that the state never gives up on pushing towns to reach that 10 percent threshold, this other method of making the moratorium points notwithstanding. And they can, and at least once, I think it was Bloomfield, don't hold me to that, they made as a condition of the moratorium that they get in the, in the next four years, X number of, of low-income housing units built. And then, lo and behold, the developer came in, just out of kindness, I suppose, made a development, made an application for such a development, that the town was really kind of gun to their head, had to, had to approve. And again, back to my original point, 830G is a nuisance because it makes our jobs harder, but it's still a better idea than building an entire low-income community.
Yeah, following up on that, there are groups that monitor towns that, that promote affordable housing. And I know they watch us, other communities as well, because that's what they do. And so they are out there as well and paying attention to what different communities are doing and not doing because they're advocates for affordable housing. There's been some general discussion, from what I understand, on a federal level as well, talking about affordable housing.
Right.
I mean, obviously, we all know affordable housing's a problem for a lot of people. You know, you just get out of school today, good luck trying to find a place to live. But with that said, the current legislature or legislation has made it difficult for small towns like ours.
Right.
I think everybody's aware there's, there's an issue. Has it been addressed on the state level appropriately? I have to toss up on a million different views.
Yeah, we're really at an awkward size as far as town goes. I mean, if you were in Volentown or in Bridgeport, it wouldn't be an issue. You'd almost automatically either qualify or they wouldn't be interested in you. But we're kind of in the sweet spot of the towns that the legislature is trying to take greater control over. And it frightens me to jump from one into a situation that might be much worse.
Any other questions? We were so lucky to get you here tonight. I want to make sure everybody...
Sure, yeah, and I'm happy to, if there are any other questions on this or the other application I mentioned, I'm happy to...
Oh, that's tonight.
Okay. Thank you so much for your work on this.
I might suggest, just as a thought, maybe the commission wants to sleep on this, and maybe we want to bring Tim back if you, you know, as you ponder this for a week or two.
Yeah, I don't think we want to make any decisions tonight.
It's up to you, what you choose to do.
So I'll be back here on, was it November, for the, what is that, November 21st, '21? Yeah.
Sid, just upset.
Yeah, so I'll be here that evening for those conforming changes for the text amendment. So if there are questions, you know...
Convenient time.
Yeah, and if you're able to send, if there are more detailed questions, if you're able to send them to Bill ahead of time, I can be a little more prepared to address whatever specific things come to mind. But I think if, if you did want to act on this, it would be sort of up to the commission to direct Bill or myself to prepare a letter for the chairman to sign on behalf of the commission, asking, you know, making a recommendation to the first amendment.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, do we have need for Tim to stay for a few more minutes? Or I know we're going to have a pretty quick meeting, I think. Is there any items that...
I don't, do you, I don't see any.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Bye, Lee. Have a good night.
Thank you. You, too. Moving on to the minutes, I just had one correction under number 12. It said the developer was allowed to move forward. The project is being contested by the neighbors. It had been contested, but the, the, it's been seven years of litigation, and it was decided the developer could move forward. So the neighbors, it's not currently being contested, it's, it had been. Thank you. Anybody else? Do we have a motion?
Move to accept minutes as corrected.
One second, Matt.
We have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? 600? Old, old business? None tonight? Subcommittee reports, I believe, the one?
I will, I will comment on that.
Okay.
I have a finished draft. I had some discussion with Norman. We're not quite where we thought we were, so we're going to hold off on that for a couple of weeks. We should be ready next time around. We just want to make sure we get it so it works if it's something you choose to do.
All right.
Thank you.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
As to where we're headed with this, the, the idea was to stop what seems to be very popular, or slow down what seems to be very popular these days, mixed use. And we were aimed at the Post Road, which is really the oldest road in town, Main Road, I should say, which is a CA zone, and also Black Point Road, which is in the CA zone. But leave, leave Flanders Road and West Main Street alone. There's not much left of any significance as far as historic structures that we, that'd be a big cry to, you know, if one was demolished. But, so we're trying to write it, structure it to address that idea.
Which is a bit tricky, but we'll get there.
We don't want to, we didn't want to, you know, why over-regulate Flanders Road? And it's already pretty much redeveloped. It's nothing old. So it wouldn't hurt to leave it as is on that strip, so.
Well, we're all looking forward to seeing your text amendment. Under new business for next time, we will have the application of Michael Lamparsky for BAM Fitness South, doing business coastline fitness, for a special permit for a health club for property located at 15 Industrial Park Road, Assessor Map 26.1, Lot 2. And Mr. Mahullen, you're going to schedule that for...
I will schedule that.
For a hearing. Do we still have the application of Laurie Surrender?
No, we can pull that.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what I thought. Okay. Moving on, we will have the application of Jeffrey McNamara Agent for Jennifer and Damian Ferminich, not sure I pronounced that right, owners for a special permit for a private club known as Patagonia Art Center per section 25.5 of the East Lime zoning regulations on property identified as 121 Upper Patagonia Road, East Lime, Assessor Map 35.0, Lot 44. And Mr. Mahullen, you will schedule that as well?
Thank you.
Thank you. And Attorney Bluestell mentioned earlier, he will come back with text amendments to section 1345678912 of the East Lime zoning regulations. So they will comply with the new state PA 23-143 regulations. And Mr. Mahullen, can you also schedule that?
Thank you.
You have 142.
Oh, okay. Did I say 140?
You said 143.
I was at 142. Thank you. Right now, is there any business on the floor that the committee would like to discuss? I can bring that up right there. Okay. Correspondence, there is none this week, so let's move to public delegations, which is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission regarding zoning land use items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here tonight? Come on up. Just please state your name and address before you speak, yes.
Mark Christensen, 66 Grassy Hill, East Lime.
Thank you.
Mr. Mahullen always said, walk boldly through the door and state your case.
Come on down.
So here I am.
Come on down.
Let me hand these out to you all first.
Thank you.
Secretary and Chairman, got an extra report here. Enjoy this.
All right. Hello, zoning commissioners. I am Mark Christensen, and I had a recent application before zoning, which I withdrew before it went to a public hearing, and I briefly wanted to explain myself and my actions. Although the application was withdrawn, the reasons behind the application, I believe, are still present. I withdrew due to the cost that I would need... I withdrew due to the cost that I would need to pay for the certified mailings, as explained to me by Mr. Mahullen, as well as the fact that the town staff needed to send documentation and get a reply from neighboring towns and a state agency, and the time for that was now limited. So, now, for the reasons behind the application, the two most important natural resources in the town of East Lime are water and water. The first is drinking water, which comes from aquifers, which are fed by their surrounding watersheds and much of the town depends on. The second is water that ultimately flows into the Niannick River from a watershed north of the river, much of it in East Lime. The Niannick River is integral to supporting many businesses in Niannick and brings many tourists who spend money at boatyards, fishing excursions, as beachgoers, restaurants, et cetera. It is important that this water be kept clean and viable to serve as an attraction for people who spend money at local businesses, which in turn support the tax base. I believe that both are in jeopardy, and a partial remedy, a partial remedy, lies with the zoning commission. Several years ago, the town adopted new aquifer protection standards, and the protections to water in the aquifer that were once standard have been reduced. The smaller area of the aquifer protection was created based on some suggestions from the state of Connecticut. It really amounted to wellhead protection, not aquifer protection. This change, however, allowed for the development of lots of impervious surfaces with more on the way, and this will produce runoff that will carry road salt and other contaminants that eventually can make its way into the groundwater and bring with it various pollutants. That is highlighted on the second form I gave you. Just look at the graph for a quick review on the back. You don't have to read everything. Specifically, sodium has been found in increasing levels each year in town wells, and the trend line shows a continual upward projection. In fact, four of the six wells show sodium levels higher than the accepted standard of 28 parts per million. Not surprisingly, the wells with the most rapid increase in sodium levels are the wells in the aquifer protection area, which includes the area under I-95, currently under construction. As a side note, when the new exit 74 interchange was being proposed and reviewed at a town meeting, I asked condot official and engineers to design a spill mitigation system into the plan in order to prevent spills resulting from accidents getting into the aquifer. I pointed out that the New London Water Authority was required by the Connecticut Department of Health to design a spill mitigation system along I-395 if they were to connect to the Miller's Pond water into their water system. Former First Selectman Mark Nickerson also stated that he asked DOT officials for such a precaution. Current State Rep. Holly Cheeseman also asked the Connecticut Department of Health to intervene and get DOT officials to include a spill mitigation design into the exit and exit ramps, into the design of the exit and entrance ramps, which are directly over the aquifer protection area. Requests were all denied, and when I queried state officials as to why they couldn't accomplish this task, they finally answered. The answer was, "Because there's no regulation that says that we must." It should be clear that we cannot rely on state officials to protect drinking water in East Lime. You should also know that tougher EPA standards for drinking water are soon to be enacted, specifically the acceptable levels of PFAS, also known as forever chemicals, as they don't degrade and always find their way into groundwater. Finally, many people in town have felt secure, knowing that we can access water from the New London reservoir system during the summer months when the local population increases due to summer visitors. What many don't know is that the agreement with New London also mentions that East Lime must send potable water to New London that meets their standards. If East Lime doesn't have satisfactory water to send in the winter, we won't get water from New London in the summer. In reviewing the minutes from the Aquifer Protection Agency, it looks as though that group has not met in a year, other than approving business registrations. Other issues regarding aquifer protection I have outlined are not dealt with. It seems that that needs to change in order to best protect East Lime drinking water. In comparing the East Lime aquifer protection area with the New London Water Authority, we see that the New London reservoir system, large tracts of land that feed the reservoir, are fenced off, and hiking, fishing, boating, or trespassing are not allowed. In East Lime, we have some of our most heavily developed and traveled and paved over areas within the aquifer protection zone. It seems inevitable that these areas will either need some sort of expensive remediation to provide drinking water or be abandoned when they can't meet required standards a few years away from now. We do, however, have a partial answer to the problem in the four-mile aquifer, which is currently untapped. Better protections should be put in place there through zoning. The same is true for the Niannick River, and that can be protected by protecting the watershed in East Lime that feeds that river. The Niannick River Watershed Committee has done studies on that issue, and more protection is needed, especially if a large multifamily development occurs along the river. These reports are available from the town. I hope you are able and interested in acting upon this information. I suggest that a subcommittee of zoning be established, and protection of land in the north end of town be considered as a reasonable solution to these issues. I think members of zoning and conservation commissions would work well on a subcommittee, consulting with staff from the town water department, and I will volunteer myself for such a subcommittee. I do believe the future of East Lime depends upon action taken now. I am submitting just a small bit of the data as documentation of my concerns. More is available for your consideration. I thank you for your service and for your consideration of my suggestion. The end.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public delegation? Okay, well, Mr. Mahullen, do you have anything for us tonight?
I don't, we're busy, but I will note one thing. Capacity, sewer capacity is becoming an issue, and it's going to affect the rate of development, if not limited, or even perhaps stop it, or redevelopment, I should say, because without sewer capacity. So, that's being explored by the Water and Sewer Commission, and they're looking at that. So, that may slow down some of the things that we see as well. I'm not talking about the mom and pops, but some of the bigger things that might come our way.
I just had a question. I was looking at the Starbucks, how they're doing the curbs along there, and it looks like they're putting the curb to go in where they had it temporarily blocked off. What's like, what's going on with that?
It's between the state and the property owner. That drive-through facility received a variance. This board did not give the drive-through at Starbucks. It was the zoning board of appeals some years ago. We were somewhat surprised, but nonetheless, so we've had to deal with it over time. We were hopeful that the state might close that off permanently. But you see what I see. And so, we're probably going to have to look at that from our perspective again, and maybe talk to the state and the property owner and see where that takes us.
Any questions for Mr. Mahullen?
Yeah, I have a question. With what Mr. Christensen just stated and suggested, and with this data here, what do we have to do to get a subcommittee? Do we have to have a discussion about it at some point?
Well, I think it's up to the commission if you put together a subcommittee to look at zoning issues. On the aquifer side, you're only empowered to do certain things and not, there's, I think, some misinformation out there about what you are empowered to do. At this point, as noted, you're, we're really doing business registrations. The aquifer program is a state-mandated program. It wasn't suggested, it was required by the state, it was handed to us, and it was, "You shall do these things and you shall run it this way." So, they have most of the jurisdiction. And then over water issues, in my opinion, that's generally the Water and Sewer Department. We're looking at, we have very limited authority, and I've inquired of the state, I have some emails somewhere buried, I'm sure I could get them out, about those issues. However, if you want to put together a subcommittee of members of the commission to look at upzoning in some area of town, that's certainly up to the commission.
Actually, I was going to bring it up in the chairman's comments in a little bit, but let's talk about it.
Yeah, because I just would like to guess, you know, there's, a lot of people are concerned, well, there's a lot of questions about what we're allowed to do with the aquifer protection agents, which is what zoning does. But it's like, I like to talk about it, but I'd also like to do something, like at least, you know, whatever it is we're allowed to do, I'd like to get a jump on it, whatever we're allowed to do, because the drinking water is posing a huge problem in our town. And, you know, I'd like to further investigate on that.
The first thing that comes to my mind is the town ordinance requiring natural fertilizers. No more chemicals, period. Perhaps in certain areas of town, but maybe the whole town. That would be a good start, push for something like that. It was talked about, it might even be in the plan of conservation and development. It might have been mentioned.
I actually saw a thread somewhere, I don't know if it was on the news, that there was, out in the Midwest, or one farmer used natural fertilizer versus somebody who used chemicals. And it appeared that the natural fertilizer seemed to, in the long haul, give a better production rate. I mean, that's not my forte, but I thought I saw a little article on that. So, it apparently is being talked about nationally.
And along with the ordinance, information to townspeople, where to buy this stuff, and reports on, you know, how it works. Education and an ordinance, I think, would be a heck of a start, and it's a tangible thing that can be done. One person can do it.
And recently, in Pine Grove, they have these wells, the state deep has drilled certain little wells, they're like, maybe they're like 60 or 70 feet down. And periodically, they go around and they test them, and it's all on the, it's a peninsula out there on Pine Grove. And so, I spoke to the gentleman who conducts the tests, and he's been doing them for like 15 years. So, when they want to come out there and retest the water, that's what they do. So, I didn't realize this until like probably three years ago. We banned the use of Roundup in Pine Grove with that, you know, the association. And plus, it's a small concentrated area, so people are very aware. But what I found interesting is, is that the statistics from his data that he got were very promising. The freshwater that runs underneath the saltwater is progressively testing cleaner and cleaner and cleaner. So, I just find that very fascinating, and it says a lot about, you know, what we're doing on top of the land, what's seeping out under and stuff. So, those can be found on the town's website. I believe he's got them in there. If not, if anybody's interested, I can certainly give it to him. But it's very interesting, he has all the graphs, he's done this for, I think, like 13 or 15 years out there. So, they've changed from then until now, and they're going to be coming out again to test them again, too. So, and also to try to set up something, because he's agreed to talk to the town as a whole. So, you know, with those results and stuff, which are very, it's very important, so, okay.
Thank you. Ms. Hardy?
What do you name? What do you think?
I think I'm going to have to hire that attorney to come to Board of Selectmen with me, because I have no idea how I'm going to summarize that before I give, to report back to the board of selectmen.
There's a lot there.
So, I'm going to change my order of, the report that I was going to give, and go right away to the proposed offer of sale of property, spot, lot, remaining lot of property on the Hathaway property. And I think that this follows along with what we've just heard from our guest here. And so, the owner of the property has offered the remaining portion of the Hathaway property, which we did not buy previously. There was a remaining lot, there are three lots, actually, and he has offered those to the town for $400,000, which is a lot of money. However, we have received a previous grant from the state for the initial purchase of that property, which we still have in trust. That was $400,000. I have spoken with Holly Cheeseman, who was very instrumental in helping us get that earlier grant, and she feels confident that for water protection, aquifer protection, that she might be able to access a grant for us. So, I think with everybody's tax, everybody concerned about their taxes and upcoming rates, we also have to think about the future. And the important, one of the major importances of this property is that it is the only well that is north of I-95. And as we all know, water runs downhill. So, that would certainly be a prime consideration. Secondly, this completes a block of land. So, we already own three-fourths, more than three-fourths of that. This would complete that, and we would have a whole protected area. And we also would gain waterfront. This parcel, this parcel was cut off, so that in the initial purchase, we did not get very much of the waterfront property. This opens opportunities for like recreational activities, fishing, swimming, perhaps. So, I think there are a lot of possibilities.
Are there any deep restrictions on that parcel?
This is, I'm just bringing this to you as this was just brought forward at our last meeting. The developer has said that he needs an answer by the end of December, and that he has a prospective purchaser who has offered $600,000 for it. So, which offer, I assume, he would take. So, I think that this is something that we've got to get the community together on. It can't just be one separate board. We've all got to work together, determine the real value of this, and then sell it to the public, if this is what we really want. And I think that that, this is very timely, considering the remarks that we've just heard and comments from the public. There'll be more information forthcoming, and of course, there will be a lot of steps. There'll have to be public hearing. So, this is just, again, information to, for you to think about and begin to process as to whether or not you want to be an advocate for this. Fair Rent Commission, we have, they had their first organizational meeting earlier this week, and we still have one position available. That is for an alternate position, and that has to be a residential landlord. So, this has been very, very complicated to pull together, because the state has set up very stringent requirements. Not only do we have to pay attention to party affiliation, we're required to have a commercial landlord, a residential landlord, two general members of the public. I mean, the restrictions were quite amazing once we got into it. So, I think that we've done a good job in setting up the commission, and I have great confidence that this is going to help many of our elderly, as well as low-income people. And I think it feeds into the whole affordable housing. and I think it feeds into the whole affordable housing idea as well. We also are ready, almost ready to put into effect the EV charging stations. Discussion about whether we should give town employees a discount rate, and out-of-town employees pay a different rate. So all of that still has to be worked out. There will be three charging stations, all available to the public in the downtown area. And a big, a big impetus for this was to, again, support local businesses. I personally don't have an electric vehicle, and I don't believe I'll be buying one, but we have a lot of people that do have them, and particularly a lot of people that come in the summertime. And so I understand that it takes, depending on the vehicle, it takes between two and three hours to fully charge a vehicle, and so hope would be that they would then walk over onto Main Street, maybe, you know, visit some shops, and help the local businesses. Capital Improvement Plan, that's going to be put into place, and I believe that we will want somebody from this commission, and probably Mr. Maholland as well, to be part of that. That's being put together right now. The Board of Education is leaping into artificial intelligence, and they've already hired someone to assist in how to bring this forward into the curriculum and educate the teachers as to how to use it and what to look for in terms of student work, and how to determine whether it's the students' work or some artificial assistance. So that's going to be an interesting journey as well. And I think that's it. Can I answer any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any talk, or has there been any talk on the update of ARPA funds? Just carries.
Yes, but I'm not on that committee. So, but I will find out. I don't know what the progress is on that. It has not been.
Because I know there's a deadline, correct?
Yes, and I, we have not had a full report on that. I don't know if departments have been briefed on this?
No.
Okay. I'll inquire, and I will get that information to Mr. Maholland, who will then forward it.
I will.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Done.
Ms. Uhost, do you have a planning report?
I do.
Oh, good.
The big news is, there is apparently the Walnut Hill Chase subdivision on Farm Meadow Road. That's going to be starting again. They, we heard the tank is buried, and the road is completed, so that's moving forward. On subdivision regulations, waivers, fees in lieu of sidewalks, open space improvements, Section 9.1, financial guarantees for completion of public improvements, and Gary Geshel said that bonding should also cover monuments and iron pins when there's no other public improvements. Apparently, there is a sidewalk project on East Patagonia Road, and the project is expected to start in late spring. And the Bridebrook Estuary Habitat Transformation Project, the Nature Conservancy received a $4 million grant to improve the channel, an outlet to the Long Island Sound on Bridebrook. The project is expected to last three years. They're going to dredge to improve the channel. That'll help the Aleweith population. And there's an application of Niatic management care of Joe Wren, agent for Lot 1, re-subdivision of approximately 7.08 acres of landzone, see a commercial and waiver request form sections of the East Lime subdivision regulatory, regulations on property located at 269 Flanders Road, Niatic Assessor's Map 31, Lot Number 6. And they are going to have a, the staff scheduled a public hearing for that. So that's that, where the motel is, I think. That's it.
Thank you. And we have, the next planning meeting is November 12. And are you attending that stuff?
Yeah, we'll see.
Okay. That takes care of that one. I had three things today. One, we need to approve the meeting dates for next year so we can file them. They should be in your packet.
There's one, I didn't mention this before, that April 17 is the date for Good Friday. I didn't know if you wanted to move back to April 10.
We do.
Instead of April 3, 17. So it would be the second and fourth instead of the first and third.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter to me. Anybody have?
Change it, yes.
Thank you.
So it would be April 10 and April 24.
We will send you out a, you'll get an email. You'll get an email with the dish.
She'll send us. Does anyone want to make a motion on this?
I make a motion that we accept the dates as amended by Jessica right now to change the one date in April, from the 17th to the 10th.
I'm sorry, so from April 3rd and 17th to April 10th and 24th.
Okay.
And to approve the entire schedule.
And to improve, and to approve the entire, entire schedule.
We have a second with Ms. Calow. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, neutral, at pass 600. Actually, I don't have that. I was just going to bring up if anyone on the committee was interested in being on a subcommittee to look into what Mr. Christensen was talking about.
I would.
You would?
I love that stuff, yes.
Okay, so we have, and.
Me, too.
So we have two people very interested. Anyone else interested in looking into the aquifer issues?
They'll do a good job.
But if you're going to incorporate people from other boards as well, two is probably sufficient from here.
So why don't we?
We need to look into whether we can do that.
Right. I mean, that has to come from the Board of Selectmen if you're going to put together a cross-commission committee.
Probably legal.
We, well, we have two people very passionate about it, so why don't we start with that? And if you two can meet and just see where it leads you, we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Anybody else have any tonight? No? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor. Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.